Yeah.
Did you have a county in the name card?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Look at us, miracles.
Hey, Chuck, Julie.
Yes.
The Governing Body will come to order, and I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mayor Elkins is present and presiding, Councilmember Phylla is absent, Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Sipple.
Here.
Councilmember Kane.
Here.
Councilmember Sunkel.
Here.
Councilmember Gaia.
Here.
Councilmember Harrison.
Here.
Councilmember Castor.
Here.
Okay, I find that a quorum is present this evening, and we can move on to the business of the evening. At this time, I would invite scouts from Troop 218 and from PAC 3395 to please present the colors.
Color guard, attention. May everybody please rise. Color guard, advance. Color guard, post the colors. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color guard, retire the colors. Color guard, dismissed. You may be seated.
Thank you, and I'll invite the scouts to come back forward once they've deposited the flags, and ask you to introduce yourselves and tell us about your unit. Weebloos, you guys too, come on back front. I know this is a part you didn't want to do.
Come on in.
I'm Chase Pharaohs, I'm from Troop 218, I'm a life scout, and I'm also a foxman and, um, Order of Aero member.
Great, welcome. Yes, sir.
I'm Frank Waynick, I'm from Troop 218, I'm a second-class scout, and, uh, yeah.
Well, you're on the trail to Eagle, we hope to see you in a few years. Yes, sir.
My name's William, and I go to Curie Vars, and I'm nine-years-old.
And PAC 3395?
Mm-hmm.
Great, welcome.
My name is Augie, um, I'm nine-year-old, years-old, my school is Curie, and I'm PAC 3395.
Great, welcome, Augie.
Hello, my name is, um, Robert, I go to Curie Vars, my PAC is 3395, and I'm a Weeblo.
Robert, we're glad to see you, you planning on going on into scouts?
My name is Luke Trabara, I go to Curie Vars, I'm, and I'm in PAC 339, and I'm 10-years-old.
Great, the Weeblo's, uh, den was here to visit with me earlier this evening to talk about municipal government, so I got a quick, uh, class in civics this evening. Yes, sir, the leader of the group.
Hi, I'm Owen Martin, uh, I go to Blue Valley North, I'm 14, and I'm a life scout.
How close to Eagle?
Uh, I'm wondering, go where?
Excellent, well, welcome, we appreciate all that you guys did, thank you very much. All right, the next item on the, uh, the agenda this evening is the agenda itself, and approval of the agenda. Um, there were some changes, uh, at the last minute, uh, this afternoon, but they were published. Uh, does staff have any additional amendments or changes to the agenda?
No.
If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as it was finally published?
Move as finally published.
Thank you, Ms. Kane, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Sipple, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign? The ayes have it, and the agenda is unanimously approved. Next section of our, um, agenda is citizens' comments, and I note that Mr. Berry signed in. Mr. Berry, would you like to, thank you, welcome, and we're glad to hear your perspective on things.
Seth Berry, uh, 9419 One Anger Road, here in Leewood. Just wanted to express our appreciation, uh, for Mark taking the time today, as well as like everything that the council does in terms of, uh, supporting the scouts, uh, especially with the Parks Department, so, uh, I know you guys get a lot of other comments, whatnot, uh, that are probably more heated, but this is just a, uh, an appreciation, thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Mr. Berry, we very much appreciate that. As I, I asked the scouts during our meeting this evening if they were happy to live in Leewood, and they all said they were, and I said, "That's what this group is all about, it's making sure their residents are happy." So we know that our 10- and 11-year-olds are happy, and hopefully the adults are happy to be living in Leewood as well. But again, if you tried to sum, sum our, uh, mission up in one, in one small sentence, it would be to make our, our residents happy to be living in our city, so, thanks again for reminding me of that tonight, guys, I really appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation, I don't believe I have any proclamations, do I? Uh, you were, but if you, please come forward.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Absolutely.
I just have a few, um, I want to also express my gratitude for a great job cleaning up the, um, streets during the snowstorm. You guys did a remarkable job, I've lived in Leewood for five years, good job, so thank you very much. I did want to address a couple of things, because I can't find them on the website. Um, so, we have several city ordinance, and I'm, um, ordinances regarding, um, shoveling sidewalks. I'm an avid walker.
Yes, ma'am.
In the city of, in Old Leewood, where there's lots of sidewalks, um, and, um, and trailers being parked on the street, and how those, um, ordinances are enforced. Um, those, those are the two questions I have.
Okay.
And hopefully you can answer them for me.
If, if you could give us your name and your home address.
Oh, sure, I'm Lori Davies, and I live at 9727 Sagamore Road.
Thank you, Ms. Davies.
You're very welcome.
And as a general matter, and this is just a broad, uh, uh, generalization, subject to check of the ordinance itself, but our snow removal ordinance, uh, creates an expectation that sidewalks will be cleared within 48 hours of the end of the snow event, and end of snow event is not terribly well-defined, but it's the end of the snow event. And then with respect to trailers, I don't have a great answer for you on that, but if you could leave your email address, um, I'll ask the city clerk to, to provide you with that information, and we'll have that to you tomorrow.
Awesome, that would be great, and then how do I access the street cleaning schedule?
The street cleaning schedule.
There's not a schedule online.
The sweeper?
Yeah.
I think they've just, well, four times a year, but I don't think they say when exactly.
I think that that's correct, and if you, if you have questions, um, you might reach out to the Public Works Department.
Okay.
That's the department that's responsible, and I, I'll ask Stephen, uh, to give you a, a link or a contact, um, at the Public Works Department to, to answer that same question.
Who do I leave my email with? Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, I'm sorry that we didn't, that we passed over you at the very beginning. And I don't believe I have any presentations or recognitions this evening. We have no special business, so that brings us to the consent agenda, uh, and, uh, there are a number of items on the consent agenda. Are there any, um, council members who would like to, uh, withdraw, uh, an agenda item for further discussion? Ms. Kane?
Um, G, I, and J.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Any others?
Mayor, I, we had a, the issue with the, uh, class action added to our agenda, and I'm not seeing it on the amended agenda, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't in consent. Is it K?
Eight K.
Oh, it's not showing up on my, my, must not be refreshed, so, okay.
It, it was on the Diaz.
Oh, gotcha.
Yes, it's on, it is, uh, item K.
I was looking on electronically, all right, so it's already been pulled, thank you.
Any other items? If not, is there a motion to approve, uh, the consent agenda with the exception of items G, I, J, and K?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Sipple.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sunkel. Any discussion of the motion? If not, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda with the exceptions of items G, I, J, and K, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same side, same sign, the ayes have it, and the consent agenda with the exception, exceptions of items J, G, I, J, and K is unanimously, unanimously approved. With that, I will, um, call Planning Commission Case Number 93-24, uh, which was withdrawn by Ms. Kane. Ms. Hurley, welcome. Ms. Kane, floor is yours.
Thank you, um, my first observation is, I'm not used to, or I don't think I'm used to, when we have a Planning Commission meeting item, and there's minutes, that it's in our consent agenda. So procedurally, I'm not used to it being on our consent agenda if it was part of their minutes, so I was just a little confused, could be my confusion, my disconnect?
I will say, I think it may be your disconnect, because there have been a number of instances in which, um, Planning Commission items that have minutes associated with them have been put on the consent agenda.
Well, I, I think that, okay, I, I, I don't remember it that way, but, but that's fine, but that's not why I pulled it anyway.
Okay, good.
So, okay, so my question is, my first question is, in reading these minutes, first of all, I'd like to thank the Planning Commission once again for doing such a stellar job of asking all the hard questions, because if you take the time to read the minutes, then most of the time, they ask the questions that I was wondering. So, um, do I understand correctly, um, that the, the, uh, the, um, stipulation that they don't have to remove the fence that had the ayes, is, that was the one that was pulled from the consent agenda? So they're not having to remove that fence to the tune of $75,000?
That's correct, they're not needing to remove that fence.
Okay, so the, I think that was a good move, and I, I certainly am in full support of that, because the, the current owners didn't do it in the first place, and to incur a $75,000, you know, cost for something that they didn't do, um, and then, um, I thought it was worth noting, this has been going on for two years since it was first discovered, which seems, um, like a minute, and I think Commissioner Block asked a very good question. If the business owners don't understand our procedure, then one would think the contractors would, and do we, how do we avoid this in the future, and somebody is taking note of this to hopefully remedy this in the future?
Yep, so we are actually having a work session with the Planning Commission in March to talk about just this issue. Um, it doesn't happen real often, but we do occasionally have property owners who truly aren't aware that they might need a permit or approval for something, um, yes, contractors are aware, um, but generally, when this happens, it's a, an owner of a property doing work on their own. So, we're having a work session with the Planning Commissioners in March. Um, Travis Torres is going to be there to talk about their part from, um, you know, the permitting and enforcement side, and how they can work with our department, and how we can make sure that we're getting the appropriate information to business and property owners, um, regarding what types of approvals they need to get before they commence any type of work.
Thank you for that, because it's a good point that the Johnson County Contracting Licensing Board, they have to do that annually, I know, because I have one, my husband and I have one, um, and we have to take CE hours to, to maintain our license, so if we're, um, part of that group, that would be a good place to throw that in, right?
Sure.
Um, and, um, once again, I'm, I'm sorry that it had, it took so long to figure out that there was an issue, but at least we figured it out, and, and I appreciate the move to, again, not to, uh, make it worse compounded by making them pull that fence, so that's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Kane, other questions for Ms. Hurley? Do I hear a motion?
Uh, with that, I move to approve, please.
Thank you, Ms. Kane, thank you, Mr. Sipple, additional discussion of the motion? Pardon me, uh, if not, all those in favor of adopting the resolution approving a revised final plan for Iron Horse Center, Iron Horse Bar and Grill, outdoor patio, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign, the ayes have it, and the resolution is unanimously adopted. Brings us to item I on the consent agenda, which is a staff report from Chris Claxton, our Director of Parks and Recreation. Pardon me, I would note that Ms. Claxton is ill this evening, but Ms. Starr has agreed to stand in her stead. So, was that, I believe that was Ms. Kane as well.
It was, yes, um, I read with interest, and I hope you all did too, that unfortunately, uh, one of her items was the bathhouse at Ironwoods Park, and I hope that you all read that the viability of, of repairing the problem is, is apparently, it's too much for that, and they're talking about replacing it. Um, I, I did not, we did not hear at the Parks and Rec, uh, meeting of, of any estimate of cost, but obviously, that was an unforeseen, um, but it goes with exactly what we've been talking about, is Leewood, as is, as most of us up here are aging, and, uh, as things age, uh, I was just going to say the wrong word, as things age, things happen, let me put it that way. So, that's really too bad, and we're going to end up having to shift dollars around. Um, I have no idea how much, I just wondered, have you, do you have any idea what that will cost us? I see they're talking about eliminating the showers, so perhaps that will make the cost a little bit less?
Yes, um, I believe that, um, Ms. Claxton at the last, um, Park and Rec Advisory Board meeting had kind of bounced off the committee, um, a little bit about this, um, shower issue, and whether a shower was really needed at that facility or not. Obviously, the more square footage the facility has, and the more amenities it has, the more expensive it'll be. Um, but, uh, um, she has engaged, um, a firm to look at some, some options, and will be looking at some different costs, and I, I believe that she had indicated that that would be coming back through the committee, once she had an idea of some of those cost estimates and options.
Uh, thank you for that, so I was just making sure everybody read that carefully, and realized that we will have to fix that, uh, they are renting out the cabins, is what it says here, they're not going to, no, we're not going to have another year of no cabins, because we had a year of, just one, of no cabins, right, Chuck, one?
One year.
Yeah, one year, so we are not going to not rent the cabins again this year because of this, but we'll put porta-potties, or whatever it is we have to do for a short-term fix. Um, that's all I had on this, um, item.
Thank you, Ms. Kane, is there a motion to accept the staff report from the Director of Parks and Recreation?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Sipple, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison, any discussion? If not, all those in favor of accepting the staff report from, uh, Ms. Claxton, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign? The ayes have it, and the staff report is unanimously accepted. Brings us to item J, which is the Public Works, uh, project updates, and again, I believe this is Ms. Kane. Ms. Kane, the floor is yours.
Yes, um, Mr. Lay, um, as, as the Chair of the Public Works Committee, I, when I heard the announcement, and now, of course, it's, it's, um, been delayed, but the potential of what may be happening to federal funds with cities and nonprofits and across the board, um, how do you foresee this impacting, uh, specifically the Tomahawk Creek Parkway project? Because I believe, unless I'm getting my projects mixed up, which is possible, that Fed funds were, uh, earmarked for this project.
That's correct, and we do have funds that were, I think, paused last week, but now they're released, so they're un, they've been paused, unpaused, and paused again, so I think they're currently unpaused, and so this is through the Mid-America Regional Council, so the funds have already been obligated, and my understanding, the state actually has our 3.76 million, so once we start invoicing them, we will see, we'll start receiving that funding back.
Oh, so they're, okay, good, I didn't, I hadn't heard that update, so they're at least at, at the state level.
That's what I thought.
And so, if the Fed indeed freezes it in a month or two, or a week, or two days, who knows? Um, we're going to be fine, because the state already has them, the state can't then also freeze them?
That's my understanding, but this also has been, this doesn't have anything to do with the, the New Green Deal or the Green New Deal, so this is a little different on the funding, so there's so many different pots, but this is not one of those that are being, uh...
Councilmember Kane, I, I think I would comment that, um, at this point, we don't know that, that those funds are not coming to us, so we are assuming that they are, but we are ear to the ground and listening to everything that's happening, and there was a lot that happened last week, uh, so I think we will just have to, um, wait to see, um, and certainly apprise you of any developments that we hear about.
Um, and then, in, because it's a big question mark, and I saw Mr. Cobby just walk in, and it's super cool that he was one of the ones speaking in Topeka, um, I read that email, so yay, yay for Mr. Cobby, yay for Leewood, um, so, we're watching it so that we're not caught with our pants down, right? That we are so far involved in this project, that all of a sudden, Leewood will have to come up with an extra three, three million, three, whatever and change that was, that you mentioned.
Well, that's correct, and we're in contact with our state rep that is overseeing this project, and so at this point, he hasn't set any alarm bells off, we've talked with him, and he's already assured us that they have the money or the funds for this project.
All right, that's, that's good news then, I didn't know it had gotten that far as the state, so, wonderful, thank you. That's all I had on that item.
So, Mr. Lay, just a follow-up to, to maybe frame the issue a little bit better, uh, or more granularly, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say better, but more granularly, is, and maybe asking for something off the top of your head you don't have, but how much of the Tomahawk Creek Parkway project is supported by federal funds?
So we have 3.76 coming from the feds, and we have, at this point, right around 4.4 from Johnson County, which is completely separate, obviously, that's supported from county tax.
And, and your plans, when, when will we first see shuttles turning dirt?
Should be here fairly within a week, we should start seeing some activity out there.
And as I recall, the beginning is, will be work on the creek bed, uh, on some repairs and whatnot, uh, to, uh, improve conservation of the stormwater, uh, as it goes down, and then following that, we'll start seeing, uh, street work done?
That's correct, so they'll close the trail, and they'll start, uh, removing trees, and then doing the excavation, flood, flood benching near the creek, and then they'll move that material, most of that material, or 75% of that can be utilized for the roadway bed, and so they'll stockpile it near the roadway, and then within a couple, I believe it's within two weeks or so, they'll start, uh, working on the road, closing the road down, and removing the northbound lanes on Tomahawk from 115th Street to College.
And would you mind just reviewing with the Governing Body, the efforts that Public Works has done to communicate with, uh, residents and other property owners along Tomahawk Creek Parkway about what's going on and when it's going to happen?
Sure, so we've, well, we had some public meetings early on, and then recently, we sent postcards out, working with Beth, and so we got the postcards out, and then we sent letters out to all the property owners adjacent to it, we've put note of signs out on the parkway, we have a couple different types of signs out there, notifying the public of the project, and then we're also putting signs on the trail to notify them, because when we're down in the creek, we will have the trail closed between, pretty much from 119th Street to College.
And the expectation is the trail will be closed through April, is that right?
Through, yeah, it's about mid-April, I believe, or early April, right around that timeframe.
And total project completion estimated date?
December 5th is when it's supposed to be completed.
December.
December 5th.
And early November, it should be, pretty much, the roadway portion of it should be completed, or late November. Uh, it'll take a few weeks to finish up all the landscaping items.
Thank you, Mr. Lay, other questions for Mr. Lay concerning the report?
It's going to be great when they're done.
A question here?
Yes, Ms. Gaia.
Uh, Ms. Mayor, thank you, uh, not a question, but just a comment, I just wanted to thank you and Brian Scogel for all of your communication, um, those postcards, I think, were really helpful. I'm along Tomahawk Creek Parkway, so was getting a lot of questions from the residents, so the emails that I was able to forward, and then the postcards were really helpful, so thank you for that communication, the residents really appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Gaia, other comments or questions for Mr. Lay?
Um, with that, I'll move to approve, um, but really quickly, I didn't pull item, I, app, uh, item 8H, that was very hard for me to say, but the Leewood Police Department 2024 Annual Report is super interesting, we have lots to be proud of, I believe it's going to be published online, Beth, if it's not already, and I believe is, did it, did I note that it's also in our new Leewood Loop magazine? Did I see that? Okay, so, so if you haven't, uh, if you want to be super proud of the city of Leewood and all that we do, we were this...
Councilmember Kane, I think I would comment that at this point, we don't know that those funds are not coming to us, so we are assuming that they are. But we are ear to the ground and listening to everything that's happening, and there was a lot that happened last week. So I think we will just have to wait to see and certainly apprise you of any developments that we hear about.
And then, because it's a big question mark, and I saw Mr. Kobby just walk in, and it's super cool that he was one of the ones speaking in Topeka, I read that email, yay, yay for Mr. Kobby, yay for Leewood. So we're watching it so that we're not caught with our pants down, right? That we are so far involved in this project that all of a sudden, Leewood will have to come up with an extra three million, three whatever and change that was, that you mentioned.
Well, that's correct. And we're in contact with our state rep that is overseeing this project. And so at this point, he hasn't set any alarm bells off. We've talked with him, and he's already assured us that they have the money or the funds for this project.
All right. That's good news then. I didn't know it had gotten that far as the state. So wonderful, thank you. That's all I had on that item.
So, Mr. Lay, just a follow-up to maybe frame the issue a little bit better, or more granularly, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say better, but more granularly, is, and maybe asking something off the top of your head you don't have, but how much of the Tomahawk Creek Parkway project is supported by federal funds?
So we have 3.76 coming from the feds, and we have, at this point, right around 4.4 from Johnson County, which is completely separate, obviously. That's supported from county tax.
And your plans, when will we first see shuttles turning dirt?
Should be here fairly within a week. We should start seeing some activity out there.
And as I recall, the beginning is, will be work on the creek bed, on some repairs and whatnot to improve conservation of the stormwater as it goes down. And then, following that, we'll start seeing street work done?
That's correct. So they'll close the trail, and they'll start removing trees and then doing the excavation, flood benching near the creek. And then they'll move that material, most of that material, or 75% of that can be utilized for the roadway bed. And so they'll stockpile it near the roadway, and then within a couple, I believe it's within two weeks or so, they'll start working on the road, closing the road down and removing the northbound lanes on Tomahawk from 115th Street to College.
And would you mind just reviewing with the governing body, the efforts that Public Works has done to communicate with residents and other property owners along Tomahawk Creek Parkway about what's going on and when it's gonna happen?
Sure. So we've, well, we had some public meetings early on, and then recently, we sent postcards out, working with Beth. And so we got the postcards out, and then we sent letters out to all the property owners adjacent to it. We've put notified signs out on the parkway. We have a couple of different types of signs out there notifying the public of the project. And then we're also putting signs on the trail to notify them, because when we're down in the creek, we will have the trail closed between, pretty much from 119th Street to College.
And the expectation is the trail will be closed through April, is that right?
Through, yeah, about mid-April, I believe, or early April, right around that timeframe.
And total project completion estimated date?
December 5th is when it's supposed to be completed.
December.
December 5th.
And early November, it should be, pretty much, the roadway portion of it should be completed, or late November. It'll take a few weeks to finish up all the landscaping items.
Thank you, Mr. Lay. Other questions for Mr. Lay concerning the report?
It's gonna be great when they're done.
A question here?
Yes, Ms. Gayed.
Ms. Mayor, thank you. Not a question, but just a comment. I just wanted to thank you and Brian Scogel for all of your communication. Those postcards, I think, were really helpful. I'm along Tomahawk Creek Parkway, so was getting a lot of questions from the residents. So the emails that I was able to forward and then the postcards were really helpful. So thank you for that communication. The residents really appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Gayed. Other comments or questions for Mr. Lay?
With that, I'll move to approve. But really quickly, I didn't pull item 8H, that was very hard for me to say, but the Leewood Police Department 2024 Annual Report is super interesting. We have lots to be proud of. I believe it's gonna be published online, Beth, if it's not already. And I believe, did I note that it's also in our new Leewood Loop magazine? Did I see that?
That's in there.
Okay. So if you haven't, if you wanna be super proud of the city of Leewood and all that we do, we were the voted safest city in Kansas, and we were ranked fourth in safety last year by a different ranking city. So it's amazing, the statistics are amazing, how hard and how wonderful our police department does and is, and what they're doing to keep us safe and sound. So thank you for that. I should've probably pulled that as well.
Thank you.
With that, move to approve item 8J.
Thanks, Ms. Kane. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Sunkel. Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor of accepting Public Works, the Public Works Project Update, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the Public Works Project Update is unanimously accepted. We now come to item K, which is a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor and/or the city administrator to execute any documents required for the city to retain the Myers-Longhoffer Law Firm to represent it in the Visa, MasterCard settlement slash payment card interchange fee class action and for any potential recovery. With, I think I'll begin with Ms. Bennett, would you mind giving us a summary of, this came up at the last minute, there's a deadline, I believe, tomorrow? If you could summarize for us, and then I'll give the council members an opportunity to inquire. So, Ms. Bennett, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. This is regarding a court-approved settlement in a class action case against Visa and MasterCard. The settlement was for $5.5 billion for all persons that could have been impacted by what was considered an unfair, I'm gonna, an unfair fee between the years of 2005 and 2019. It's actually 5.6 billion, I'm sorry. People can make a claim against it, and then they look at the fees that they have paid out over that time period, and they will get a pro-rata share of the total. So what, we don't know right now what our fees will be, nor do we know for sure how many people have made a claim against this. Those two things will reflect what the city could have. I talked a little bit with Ms. Stoddard, as well, and also Mr. Kobby about this. I think they are both in favor of this. Using this law firm will be able to help us if there are questions down the line on the different servicing companies we have used. All of the details that go into processing credit cards and the credit card fees, they would be there to assist us with that. This particular firm charges a 25% contingent fee, so if we recover nothing, we pay nothing. But whatever we recover, they propose to take 25%.
And you may have already said this, Ms. Bennett, but could you talk a little bit about procedurally where the class action and the claim is? In other words, what exactly is the deadline that's tomorrow?
Deadline is midnight tomorrow.
To do what?
I'm sorry, to file a claim, to obtain money from the settlement. A claim must be filed by then. And what goes with that, if the city approves this and allows the retainer of this particular law firm, they obviously would want us to retain them before they file the claim on our behalf.
Is there anything required of staff in terms of calculating the amount of the claim or anything like that by midnight tomorrow?
No, I'm sorry, not initially. Initially, it is putting the claim together, then, it is my understanding that Visa and MasterCard and the processors that are involved in this, that they would give us an estimate back. The city would then review it, determine if it needs changes. Sometimes things are missing, some things are in conflict, so more work would come, but probably down the line. And if it does come, the law firm will assist us with that.
And in the event that we took issue with the number that the defendants and the representatives of the class action came back with, what kind of, what can you give us a description of what kind of work might be required at that point?
It kind of depends on what the issue is, but it would probably, we would probably need our staff to look back on what we have. But it could just be a matter of finding the processors that are involved, is my understanding. And Dawn can talk to this in a little more detail, that the city is known to have more than one processor and add, or at least historically has. So it's a matter of running down who has processed those card transactions over that period of time. And also, in that period of time, we've had three different finance directors. So it's a matter of looking a little bit deeper into those. And to that end, this firm is familiar with the processors and would assist us with that.
One last question from me. If at some time in the future it appears that the cost benefit of doing the work to perfect the claim versus what we might recover becomes excessive, do we have the opportunity to withdraw or walk away from the claim?
Yes.
Thank you. So with that, I believe, Ms. Harrison, you pulled that initially, I know that Ms. Larson has concerns as well, but I'll start with Ms. Harrison.
Thank you. Patty, when they say swipe fees, I work at a church, 80 of us have credit cards for the church, we all buy 10 to 50 things a month, depending on, you know, what we do for the church. Every charge would be called a swipe fee? It's not really a matter of if somebody had to go somewhere and swipe it through a reader? Is it just every transaction would be called a swipe?
That's my understanding, yes.
Wow, okay. And do you expect for this to take an excessive amount of staff time, or are you hoping that by signing this off to the lawyers, that you just have to give them, I don't know, all the bank statements from, all the credit card statements from seven years or something?
Unfortunately, it's probably more like 15 years. But I am hoping that it takes very little time. And speaking with this lawyer, the initial salvo will take very little time. It kind of depends on what the result of that is. And having the lawyer there to help us, I think, will assist staff.
Okay. And I was pleased to see that Olathe and Overland Park have jumped on board, because I believe there is strength in numbers and that they're all using the same. But they wouldn't be doing this if they thought they were gonna recover 500 or $1,000, right? I mean, they wouldn't even play in the game, right?
I anticipate it'll be more than that, but I don't know, I don't know, I don't feel comfortable giving an estimate.
Okay. I would just hate for it to take any of our staff time, more than it's already taken you to even put this on the agenda, if it was gonna be enough to buy donuts for the staff on a Friday, and, you know, at the end of the day.
While we do enjoy donuts, I think that it will be, it will be...
Okay, thank you. Nothing further from me.
And Ms. Bennett, tagging on to a question that, or a point that Ms. Harrison made, my understanding of the class action is that it involves the merchants who have made sales, the sales of which have been paid for by fees, as opposed to, in your case, the church using credit cards to buy stuff for the church. So is that correct?
Yes, I'm sorry. It is the receiving. So for instance, yes.
Oh, it's somebody buying their Little League or their soccer?
Exactly.
Oh, it's the other way around.
If the church took a credit card.
It's everybody registering for a pool pass and everybody buying soccer and yoga classes on their credit card.
Yes.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Ms. Larson, I'll go to you next.
Thank you, Mayor. When this popped up on our email this afternoon, I had a lot of concern about it, particularly because of the high contingent fee. And I have had multiple conversations, but in a short amount of time, with our city attorney. And I am convinced that 25% is too high of a contingent fee for this type of matter. It might be complicated. It might not be complicated. And I pulled up various forms this afternoon regarding how to file a claim, whether, an attorney is not required to file a claim, it's filling out a form. This, I just don't wanna give the city's money away with a 25% contingent fee. As an attorney, I feel as though this is high for this type of a matter. And while I support the staffs saving their time and not getting pulled down to this rabbit hole of processors, I would like to, for the council, to consider approving, engaging the council, but direct our city staff to negotiate a more favorable contingent fee structure.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Thought Ms. Gayed might have something to say, but maybe I misinterpreted.
No, I can speak on it, thank you, Mayor.
Sorry about that.
No, we did not get a lot of time to review this information, since we did get it pretty late. So thank you for the explanation of what is going on. While I am an attorney also, I do not have a lot of experience with class action, but my initial gut was also that that 25% was high. So if there is any way for that to come down, that would be, that would be great.
Thank you, Ms. Gayed. Questions or comments from Ms. Bennett? Mr. Sippel?
Patty, what do we know about the Overland Park firm, Myers-Longhoffer? Is that a local firm, or is that in Houston, Texas?
It's a local firm.
Okay. Have we ever done business with them?
Not to my knowledge, no. I believe Mr. Myers used to be an attorney with Stinson, and we have done business with the Stinson Law Firm.
And is it possible for other municipalities involved in this to use other local firms? Or do they have the entire umbrella themselves?
It would be possible if there were other firms that, yes, were representing people in this. They do not have it locked down for this area. I'm sorry, if that was your question.
I don't know. It seems like we're really under the gun. We've gotta decide something today, use it or lose it. You know, I don't think we can go out and negotiate with other firms here overnight. So we're kind of in a tight spot here. So nonetheless, I tend to agree with Ms. Larson and Ms. Gayed on the fees, because it's probably a simple rubber stamp allocation on an Excel spreadsheet, that's my guess. But I don't know what else we're gonna do. I think we're in a box.
If you were to approve Ms. Larson's suggestion, I would do my best to negotiate a better structure.
By midnight tomorrow night? Midnight tomorrow night?
Midnight tomorrow night.
Ms. Kane?
And I know nothing. I'm not an attorney, I am married to an attorney, does that count? But anyway, I am certainly not an attorney. But if, to Mary's point, if it's a matter of filling out a form, are we going to be responsible for giving all the data to this law firm, and then they're gonna fill out the form? Or are they digging out all of our information and earning their 25%? Because if we're gonna do all the work and then hand them and they fill out the form, then yes, that's totally, you know, it seems upside down. But unless they're doing the digging and we're just gonna somehow give them all the records.
Don't you love this lawyer's responses? It depends. The form itself, the initial form before midnight tomorrow night, does not require a whole lot of work. I mean, it requires work, but not digging into the records and looking back at 2005 and finding out how much the city, how much MasterCard and Visa business they did. However, once it goes, form is submitted, it is my understanding that the settlement has access to the processors and to Visa and MasterCard, and they will put together their estimate of what the city is, it should show as its fees paid. They will send it back, and at that point, Mr. Kobby and his staff will take a look at it. And if it's far off, if it looks, that's not possible, it could be that low, that will take a little bit more work. Or it also might be going back to the law firm, and then the law firm doing more work of, here are the processors we used in 2007, and the law firm would go back and work with those processors to try to find out the numbers from back then and make sure everything's accurate, to make sure all processors are accounted for and all years are accounted for. So again, it depends. If it comes back and Mr. Kobby says, that's perfect, then that's all the work that's needed. If it goes down the road where it looks like finance is gonna need to do more work, the firm will work with finance to take as much of a load off of them as they can.
Ms. Larson?
I think it might be helpful for folks to understand, for example, for attorneys when they enter into a fee agreement for, say, someone has been committed, has been charged with a crime. There, within the fee structure, there can be, I represent you to this point of the trial, and then if we go to trial, there's additional fees. So attorney fee structures can be, you know, segmented and based on the amount of work. And so that's what I would like for us to do as a city, is 25% contingent fee is too high if there's not much work to do. But if there is work to do, that might be a reasonable fee. So what I'm asking is that for our city's staff to negotiate a fee agreement that encompasses both scenarios. An easy recovery, and it's a slam dunk, or if it requires work and the 25% is a justified contingent fee. If that makes sense. I think Sherry wants to add.
Ms. Gayed?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there a world in which we can just file the form on our own and see what the results come back with? And if, to what you said earlier about process, and then we'll kind of get that amount, and then Mr. Kobby will look at it, if then at that point, it's, oh, boy, this is gonna require a lot more, is there a world in which we can then engage them, once we know that it's going to be slightly more complicated versus just submitting the form and then it's like, okay, good?
There is absolutely a world where we can submit it on our own without the law firm. I do not know whether this particular firm, I don't know what its fee structure would be if we hired it during the worst of times. I don't know.
Thank you.
Other comments? I guess, for the sake of full disclosure here, just provide a little bit more context. Jim Myers of the law firm is a lawyer, frankly, that I hired as an associate, just as I hired Ms. Bennett as an associate 30 years ago or so. And I worked with him, he second-chared me on a couple of jury trials that I did there. He left the firm long before I did. I haven't had any involvement with him or watched his performance, so I'm not in a position to comment on his abilities after 20, 25 years' worth of practice. He was a good associate, but a lot has happened since then. He approached us, he approached me on Friday, asking me, one, if we had already filed a claim, and, two, if we knew that we were putative members of the class. And that's when I referred him to Patty. We, in fact, did not know that we were putative plaintiff, members of the class. And so that's why there's been such a mad scramble here. But again, for the sake of full disclosure, I want you to know that that was how this came to pass. Mr. Sippel?
Just help me understand the scope of this. Is this a national settlement or international settlement? Because you think of all the things that people charge on their credit cards, whether it be airline tickets or soccer fees at a municipality, but there's so many merchants and Amazon and all this. I have a sense, and I could be very wrong, that the municipality's recovery compared to Amazon or American Airlines or FB, you know, all these rentals and everything that people charge on credit cards, we're gonna be a very small, very small piece of this, less 25%. I'm not anticipating anything that's gonna be a six-figure recovery at all, so it's just a comment.
And I think it's a fair comment, even if it's not an international class action.
These are giant numbers. And for these two banking companies to agree to 5.6 billion, which is a small part of their P and L, they're still, you know, they're willing to pay it, but the recovery that we're gonna get as a municipality, I think, is gonna be extremely modest.
Other comments? Mr. Sunkel?
I agree, Mr. Sippel. It does sound as if it's likely not to be a huge number. Also, both the other municipalities in the area are bigger dogs than we are likely. They've probably taken more money than we do. I don't know if we'd take... I don't know if we take from that that they're paying the 25% contingent fee as well. I assume they would be. But I would kind of bow to that a little bit if, you know... But I like Ms. Larson's suggestion that we try to negotiate maybe a two-tier.
Ms. Gayed.
But we do not know what the other municipalities negotiated as far as a fee structure. Is that correct? The 25% was just presented to us, but we don't know what the other municipalities are doing.
I do not know for sure, it's my understanding it was 25%.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Larson.
No, I would like to just, it's an unfortunate position, because we obviously want more information and more time to digest this. But I would go ahead and make a motion to direct our city staff to engage the law firm to represent us in this class action recovery. But direct them to negotiate a more favorable contingent fee structure.
And if they don't, by midnight tomorrow, the staff will need direction.
If they're not able to negotiate lower than the 25%, then... I think we go ahead and hire them. I don't really know how to, I don't know how to put that in the motion. I'm confident that they can do it. But we do have to have that base covered. If we have any creative thinking on how to verbalize that motion to cover all bases.
Well, one, well, go ahead, Ms. Bennett.
I was, I... ...person's language. With a motion to approve the resolution, one, I need to make sure that we have the authority on the record for either the mayor or the city administrator to sign whatever might need to be signed, whether it be with the law firm or for the settlement itself. And so, a motion to approve the resolution premised upon a direction to staff to do its best to negotiate a more advantageous fee structure with the law firm.
I think that I would be remiss if I didn't at least raise the possibility of, in the event that staff is unable to negotiate a more favorable rate, to direct staff to file the initial claim on our behalf.
Yes.
And at that point in time, we may have lost an opportunity with the law firm. If we go back in the worst of times and ask them for help, they may say it's 30% or 35% now, because it's all, it's all kind of a roll of the dice, if you will. But that would be a possibility.
Yes, I think that's a good solution. And we also have to remember, there's not just one class action law firm in the Kansas City metro area. There are several to choose from. So, with that in mind, I feel confident if we weren't able to successfully negotiate a fee and we filed the claim on our own, we would be able to hire competent legal counsel to help us.
Ms. Bennett, does that give you what you need to draft around?
Yes.
Any other discussion or comments, Mr. Sunkel?
I would only point out that part of that 25% may be sort of a finder's fee here, since we didn't know about it to begin with, and they came to us. I think, you know, we could think of it that way as well. But I like what you've worked out here, so...
And I think that's a fair point. I'll defer to Ms. Gayed and Ms. Larson, but there is an ethical issue with the law firm collecting a finder's fee or a commission, so...
Yes, not allowed.
I wouldn't be...
Comment withdrawn.
No, no, I just don't want to leave a record that suggests that that's what the firm has asked for or that that's what we're looking to pay. All right, any other discussion? I think we have a motion that I'm not going to attempt to rearticulate, but our recording should have it adequately for Ms. Bennett to draft around. Is there, and that was Ms. Larson that made the motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gayed. Any additional discussion? All those in favor of adopting the resolution as more fully described in the discussion tonight, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the resolution is unanimously adopted. Mr. Powell, I don't think I see Dr. Castor on the, he's not on my monitor. Is he on yours?
Yeah, he's here.
Okay, all right, very good, because I've not heard his vote the last couple of times.
I saw him voice vote it.
Usually I do see it. Okay, thank you. I'm not sure why it's not on my monitor, but that's no, as long as it's on yours, I'm happy. Pardon me, this long-lasting cold of mine, I thought was over until I got here tonight. So, my apologies to everyone. For my report, I've got just three things that I'll be challenged to read my own handwriting on this evening. But I will note that US Congresswoman David visited the fire station and was hosted by the chief, as well as Ms. Dodderd and I and David Lay on January 27th. She was interested in seeing our fire station or apparatus. And in addition, we had an opportunity to speak with her about the status of federal funding that we discussed tonight. And as you might expect, she didn't know any more than we did. But she was, she and her staff were willing to keep us apprised as they could. Also note that on Friday night, we hosted the Lunar New Year, traditional Lunar New Year celebration at Iron Horse Golf Course to celebrate not only the Lunar New Year, but also our longstanding relationship with the Elon County and City in Taiwan. We hosted the Director General, Bill Huang, of the Taipei, reading my handwriting here again, Economic and, I'm not gonna be able to say it, Office in Denver. He was, as always, very gracious, very pleased to be here in Leewood. It's a relationship that he values. I thank all of the governing body members that attended. I think that it was well-received and a good time was had by all. But if it was not, you may speak to Mr. Siple, as he's our representative on the Elon Committee.
Special kudos go out to the Chair of the Sister City Committee. She did a wonderful job.
Yeah, she appreciates that. And this was her first celebration to chair. And as you, for those of you, and for the record, it's my wife, Ms. Jana Elkins. Things were a little tense at our house on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, but all's well that ends well. It became even more tense, those of you who were there, realized that as I was going through my remarks, I may have should blow right by the paragraph where I thanked her for all of her hard work. So, that, after she had introduced me as the Honorable Mayor Mark Elkins, and then I failed to even note her contribution. But thanks to our former mayor running shotgun for me, she pointed out my omission, and that omission was addressed before it could go very far and caused me much more pain. So, again, thank you all for being there. It was a really enjoyable evening. Last, I sent an email to the governing body this afternoon, but I want to publicly recognize and make sure that our record reflects that our Finance Director, Don Cobby, spent his morning in Topeka, Kansas, testifying before the House Committee on Financial Institutions on a matter of great interest to the municipalities of the state of Kansas, and that relates to collateralization pools for public monies. As many of you know, public monies need to go into a depository where they are not at risk. And one of the ways of doing that is through a collateralization pool. Mr. Cobby was, this was really his second, or at least his second involvement in this issue. He was asked by both the Kansas Bankers Association and the Kansas League of Municipalities to provide consultation at the time that they were trying to resolve something that they could both agree to. Despite his best efforts, they were not able to agree to it, and it continues to be a matter of discussion in the Kansas Legislature. And the Kansas League of Municipalities requested that he provide testimony to the committee this morning. Unfortunately, it looks like he's going to have to go back, because there was so much testimony that the committee did not have a chance to ask questions. So, he will be returning. But again, I think it's a high compliment to Don, and frankly, a high compliment to our city, that we have a finance director who is looked to by many municipalities across the state of Kansas for his expertise in all things financial. And we are well-served to have Mr. Cobby here, and we oftentimes don't express our thanks or compliments to him enough. So, Ms. Cobby, again, thank you for representing, although you were not, make it clear that you were not testifying on behalf of the city of Leewood. Our challenges on municipal deposits are much different than the rural communities, and this is really, legislation is directed at trying to help rural communities find places to deposit their money. So, again, I've gone on probably too long, but Mr. Cobby, I just want you to know how much we appreciate the expertise that you bring to our city every day, and only ask once in a while to bring that expertise to the rest of the state. We appreciate it. That concludes my remarks. Are there council member reports? Ms. Harrison.
Thank you. A couple of you have asked me about the progress of the World Cup Committee that I'm sitting on, and I have nothing to report yet, because we haven't met yet. But I anticipate that I'll be hearing from the Chair of that committee, our very busy Chamber President, Stephanie Myers, here soon. But please keep in mind, if you have suggestions or dreams about what Leewood might be doing to attract people to eat and stay and play in Le... Shop, Eat, Stay, and Play, I think are the four things we're supposed to be doing here in Leewood. Let me know if you have great suggestions, things we can borrow from other cities. We're not the first people to do this, so we're not looking for original ideas. All the good ideas are already out there, so just let me know what you've seen done in the past and other places that you've been, whether it's a Super Bowl, or whether it's a Wimbledon-type event, or a U.S. Open-type event. If you've ever been a spectator at one of those big things, let me know what the cities have done to attract you to their amenities. So, I look forward to that. Hopefully, I'll have more to report in a month or so.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. And I would note, and my apologies here, that the Leewood EDC is meeting on Friday morning and is hosting, I think, the Executive Director of the Organizing Committee. And we should make an invitation to you to attend that as well.
I'm planning to.
Oh, very good, okay. Again, apologies that I did not already do that. Any other council member reports? Ms. Dodderd, the City Administrator's report, please.
No report this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Dodderd. We now go to IM12 Committee Recommendations. The matter that we have before us is a recommendation by the Public Works Committee to approve staff selection of the consultant inspection services for Tomahawk Creek Parkway. Mr. Lay? Or Ms. Kane, which would you prefer?
Well, I prefer Mr. Lay.
I thought that might be the case.
Yes, thank you. I could have teed it up again to you, David, but either way, it was coming your way.
So, thank you. So, staff reviewed and ranked four, or three firms for the construction inspection on Tomahawk Creek Parkway. It was myself, Brian Scoville, and Sean Johnson, who's kind of managing that project for us. And so, out of those three, we ended up selecting Call Valley as the most qualified, and so, we took that to the Public Works Committee, who reviewed our recommendation and is bringing that forward.
Yes, we have a robust discussion for an hour and a half on this matter, and we felt heard and respected, so thank you.
Questions for Mr. Lay on the selection of a consultant? And as I understand this process, you will then negotiate a fee for the consultation services once the scope is better defined. Is that accurate?
That's correct, and we are currently working with them on that scope. And we plan, hopefully, we'll have it on the next agenda to have their contract as that project is kicking off here in the next couple of weeks.
So, we ultimately will have another opportunity to opine on this when it comes time to approve the proposed contract. Any other discussion or questions for Mr. Lay? If not, is there a motion?
So, moved, second?
Thank you, Ms. Kane, thank you, Ms. Larson. The motion is to approve the recommendation of the Public Works Committee that staff selection for the consultant inspection services for Tomahawk Creek Parkway go forward. All those, any discussion? If not, all those in favor of approving the recommendation of the Public Works Committee, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it, and the recommendation is unanimously approved. I don't believe we have any old business this evening, and I don't believe we have any new business this evening. I will note that a matter or matters has come to the attention, to my attention, that I believe warrants a recess into executive session. And for that, I would look for a motion that we recess into executive session for 30 minutes at approximately 8:05 to discuss the possible acquisition of real property pursuant to the exception, allowing the preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property to also include consultation with an attorney, including information which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under the attorney-client privilege exception, all pursuant to the exceptions in subsections 2 and 6 of KSA Section 75-4319B. The open meeting will resume in the main conference room at the conclusion of the executive session at 8:35. Do I hear such a motion?
Semved.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. That would be Dr. Castor, I believe?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Castor. All those in favor of recessing into executive session, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it unanimously, and we are in recess until 8:35.